Especially right now in the world, the youth need help so badly. It's really difficult for parents these days. You know, most, most families have two working parents. It's hard for parents to volunteer as much as it takes to properly foster children into community activism type situations that tends to take a backseat. And the way I can figure to do that is to have the city create some of those spaces. I think that there's an overall empathy issue in the United States. And people think, well, I mean, I can barely help myself. How am I gonna, how are you, how are you gonna ask people to help other people? You know, taking jobs like social working and nurses and the jobs that are the hardest. Getting kids to use public transportation early makes, it kind of de-stigmatizes the, what people may think about public transportation. I mean, simple research will show you if you go online that there are hundreds of available houses and hundreds of available rentals. They're just not affordable. So really what we need to look at here is affordability in order to try to get people into Boulder. The problem is the market because the market is in the business of profitability, not affordability. So, you know, with that in mind, if we have somebody who's renting a house in Boulder and they put it on for $10,000 and somebody rents it, well, you know, that's what it is.
Hello, Boulder and the wider world. This is the Sharing Boulder Podcast. My name is Philip O'Grane, and for episode 41, I spoke with Jenny Robbins, who is a candidate running for city council. I sat down with her at the Boulder office for the post-production company $11 bill on the west end of Canyon Drive where her husband works. We talked about the importance of safe and convenient public transit that is child-friendly, the need in Boulder for more youth activities, how to raise compassionate and empathetic children, and affordable housing, among others. I hope you enjoy this conversation with Jenny Robbins. Jenny, welcome to Sharing Boulder. Thank you so much for making time for this today.
Thank you for having me.
You bet. Would you mind just taking a couple of minutes to introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Jenny Robbins. I've lived here in Boulder for seven years. I have two kids who are 11 and 13. They both are part of the BVSD public school system. We moved to Boulder to come to a place where there is a safe environment and good schools for our kids. My husband has a small business. We also came here for him to open up an office here, which is where we are talking from today.
Great location. We're at 207 Canyon. So way on the west end of town. Got to ride through Eben G Fine Park to get here. Lovely.
Super beautiful place to be for sure, right here at the mouth of Canyon. And let's see, we live up in Gunbarrel, and it is an interesting place to live. We love it up there. We are in a little part of Gunbarrel that was annexed in, in the 90s into the city. I am a professionally, my background is land use, land use and zoning and contract negotiation. I have, personally, I am a chronic volunteer since I've been in my twenties. I'm passionate about helping people in need. Currently, I have two Girl Scout troops that are out of Superior. When we moved here, we started out in Superior and then came up here pretty quickly after we moved here up to Gunbarrel. And so I kept my girls, my Girl Scouts in Superior though, because I love all of them. We've had 28 over the years and we've shuttled them through adolescence over, over time, had them go through some really tough things. And I've really been able to witness firsthand the resilience of our youth through really, you know, catastrophic events. And it's been, it's been my pleasure to watch these, the resilience that our youth has today.
That's great. Thank you for your service. Yeah, kids really suffered during, during the lockdown and that was tough. So one thing I wanted to just sort of, you know, ask you about is when, when I first saw you, like when I kind of sized you up, I was thinking, this is not somebody who rides a bus. And so prove, prove my prejudices wrong here.
Well, I am a city girl at heart. I've lived in Chicago. I lived in Chicago through my twenties and my thirties. And I was, you know, I'm a Chicago girl born and bred and loved living downtown. Never would have thought about driving a car in the city. Took the L, took the bus, loved, loved every second of it. That's one of the reasons we moved here is, I mean, it was a selling point for Boulder is kind of a robust transportation system. I wanted my kids to be able to use public transportation. I think that public transportation is so important from an environmental standpoint and from an independent standpoint for kids. And actually, I, one of the things that I've been talking about is I really think that middle school and high school kids should have free RTD passes. And then I was talking to Mara from Growing Up Boulder today, and she told me that they just launched that program where they will give middle schoolers, and it's a pilot program for middle schoolers and high schoolers to have free rides on public transportation.
Is it an ecopass or is it more like subsidized rides?
Free, it's free rides for anybody under the age of 19.
Okay, nice.
And so free rides, I think getting kids to use public transportation early makes them, makes, it kind of de-stigmatizes the, what people may think about public transportation. So my 13-year-old daughter this summer spent, I famously have told the Daily Camera, I went a little off, off script during an over-caffeinated conversation with Amber from the Daily Camera and mentioned that my daughter has spent her summer at Target. And, and you know, it wasn't every day, but it was a lot. But we lost our bus during COVID, our lookout bus in Gunbarrel. And so now we have the 205 that goes from kind of over by the King Supers. And then we have the Bolt that goes down diagonal. So she, you know, she has the app on her phone. She, and it's, it's, RTD does a nice job with that. It tells you exactly when you need to leave your house, to get to the bus stop, to get there, exactly when the bus comes. And so it makes it all very seamless. And it gives you a nice sense of freedom and independence. And she came down tonight, actually, she said, I'm gonna jump on the 205 and come down to Chipotle and grab dinner and come home. And I was like, okay, have fun, you know? So she does, so I'm really happy that my girls really, you know, like to do that. And as long as, you know, we stay in touch, they have cell phones. So I make sure they stay safe. They have had some going back and forth between Pearl and 29th. They have had some unsavory experiences on the bus.
On the hop or something like that, a jump.
Yes, but the RTD in general coming from Gunbarrel, they just love it. They make friends with the drivers and they think it's great. So I'm, I'm, I'm super happy about that.
Well, I haven't ridden, I haven't rode the 205 as much as other routes, but I have, I have, and it used to be a longer route, or maybe there was a separate, a different route that went up to Lookout Road.
Yes, yes.
It's too bad that it doesn't go next to one of my son's friend's houses like it used to.
Well, they did say, and I went to the Community Cycles event, the transportation event there, and you know, they had some people there from RTD and from this, and from the state and the county. And they had mentioned that they were talking about doing an on-call shuttle for some of the neighborhoods that lost their routes. And I think that's a really interesting way to look at transportation because RTD does have to pivot a little bit because of the way that people are using transportation now with Uber and Lyft and all the different rideshare. It's, it's a little, you know, people move so fast today. Everything's so fast. You have to do everything so quickly. So like the thought of standing and waiting for a bus for 20 minutes is, it's tough. So that's why I think the app is good. But if they can pivot to do some kind of on-call or rideshare type situation, so they have a mobility, RTD has a mobility project right now that they're looking at possible rideshare type situations. And then an on-call shuttle from places like maybe, like over by, oh my gosh, I'm blinking on the, it's the Martin Acres.
By the way, if we ever, if we ever drop out of podcasts, we'll just, we'll just edit it out and cut it in, yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, I'm a Martin Acres or another one who lost a route during COVID. And so if we can do some on-call for, and you know, there's, Fraser Meadows has some elderly down there. And so if they can, if RTD can figure out a way to do, cost-effectively do on-call shuttles or rideshare type situations, I think they could really expand their market.
Yeah. Well, I, I love this notion of help teaching kids to ride the bus. I do that with my own kids. I've got, I've got a senior in high school who rides the bus frequently and a, and a middle schooler who also rides the bus. And he, he takes a, a little push scooter on to, because he's got a little last mile problem because there's not a bus that drops off in front of the school. So he takes a little push scooter, unfolds it and makes, makes his way on a multi-purpose path and, and gets, gets the last mile down that way. And I don't know, I just, I really, one, one of the things I've said frequently is that when you're driving with your kids, it's sort of, there's, often there's like a you, a me versus them dynamic that, that appears in cars. Like cars tend to like make assholes out of all of us, including, including within a family, you know?
Yeah. I still drive like I'm from Chicago. And so yesterday, actually, I was, I was, I, or I mean, maybe two or three days ago, I was like, my brakes, I feel like my brakes are grinding. And so I was leaving the house yesterday, I said to my husband, um, just so you know, my brakes are grinding. And he was like, what? He came running after me. He's like, you can't drive your car. And I mean, so I, I just drive like I'm from Chicago. So we took it in and they were like, oh no, you need all new brakes. Like they're warped and.
Today.
Today. So it's literally been in the shop, all my cars have been in the shop all day today. It's, because living from Gunbarrel, we do have to take cars around a little bit more. So we, we do that, but I definitely drive like.
On the flip side, when you ride the bus with your kids, it's like us versus the world. You know, there's, there's that kind of solidarity. And I also think that your kids get to see you interact with strangers, which is just a really important sort of observational learning that, that is.
And you, you find all walks of life on public transportation, which makes things so much more interesting than driving in your car.
Interesting, could be positive.
Could be negative. Either way, it's an experience. So that's good, yeah.
Cool. Well, thanks for, thanks for humoring me on that, on that one. So maybe, I know you like to talk about youth and youth programs and as a, as a kind of central pillar to why you're running for city council. Maybe dive into that.
Sure, sure. I mean, one, one of the reasons why I decided to run for council was because back in the beginning of this year, so I've had these two Girl Scout troops for the last six years. And it's really difficult for parents these days. You know, most, most families have two working parents. It's hard for parents to volunteer as much as, as it takes to properly foster children through, you know, into community activism type situations that tends to take a backseat to sports or academics. And so I feel like things like Girl Scouts are really important, but when parents don't have the time to work with kids on other things than sports and academics. And, and I understand that struggle. I mean, my kids, they were both, one was born in 2010, one was born in 2012. Six weeks after both were born, they went directly into private daycare so I could go back to work. And I have worked every day since, and so has my husband. I know that, I understand the struggles of having to work to, to live. And, you know, missing that time with my kids when I was little, when they were little and having to put them in a daycare so I could work, I'm, I'm doing a little bit of making up for that now, you know? And trying to do what I can to make them good humans is really what I'm trying to do. And so with the Girl Scouts, I thought, well, if I can try to make my children better humans, you know, let me see what I can do with some other ones. And we had a great turnout with these girls. So we, we started the groups. And when I started them, I thought, okay, well, we'll start off by, you know, Girl Scouts. So, you know, crafts and manners and the things that they try to, you know, Daisy's has this pedal system about personal responsibility. I sit these kindergartners down and I'm like, all right, girls, you know, what do you, let's talk about what you want to do with Girl Scouts. And they were like, we want to save the dogs and we want to save the animals and we want to save the oceans. I mean, right away, they were just like ready to rock on these community. And I was so happy. So we've spent six years just going through, I mean, all different. We've worked with the Boulder County Foster Program. We've worked with AFA, Precious Child. We've done environmental projects. We've implemented the clean, the EPA Cleaner Flag Program in Superior, a stormwater pollution project. We've met with Keep a Clean Partnership and, and RAL. And, you know, we've just, I'm a better, I, I, I'm not an educator in any way. I'm just managing these girls' expectations. They want to do something cool and I'll figure out a way to make it happen. And then it's up to them. I'm not a patient person in general.
You are an educator. I'm sorry. Once you start like, you know, carting, carting wagons of girls around, it's like.
It becomes education, yeah. I daily, I am, I, I like, I like to call it management because it's, it's kind of fun, you know, to talk about that with that, with the, with the girls that way. Because it gives them kind of the freedom to, like, I'm not, you tell me what you want to learn and I'll find somebody to teach it to you, you know? And that's been, that's been a really fun process through the last six years. So, you know, kind of watching that, that hunger for leadership opportunities, I, I looked at Boulder and I thought, well, you know, I have these two girls, they're 11 and 13. They're, they've kind of aged out of, you know, some of the camps or, you know, the ones that are out there are just so extraordinarily expensive. So I started looking at the city thinking, well, you know, the city is probably going to provide some sort of pro-social leadership opportunities, something similar to the Girl Scouts. It'll be reasonably affordable and there was nothing. So that was unfortunate. They have, you know, a youth outreach board, but that's 16 plus. They have Growing Up Boulder, which is really more of a nonprofit that manages not necessarily programming, but more underserved children.
Can I just clarify something? When you say there's nothing, you mean the city isn't running programs that kind of fit the kinds of things you want to do?
Exactly.
Not, not necessarily that there's not opportunities in Boulder for kids.
There are opportunities for, not so much at this age. So when they start to kind of age out of the camps, they age out of some of the sports. There's the sailing club that's really expensive, you know, like there's summer programs, there's, and that's down at the rez, you know, like, there's a couple of different programs, but there's nothing that is community-based, volunteer-based, community activist-based, and leadership-based. I mean, there's just, there was no opportunity for that for middle school and high school kids. And so much so, there was no opportunity for that. There, there's a group of high school students at Boulder High School. They created their own, they created their own group called SCENE. And so they decided after COVID that they were feeling isolated and they wanted to try to figure out a way to get some pro-social opportunities going. And they created a group where they would go from, they went from, to a couple of businesses and hey, can we do poetry slams and art installations? And then, you know, the company, the company said, sure. And they went out and they created these great opportunities for kids who are looking to kind of get out of the isolation and, and be creative and work together. And I looked at that too, and I thought, well, that's amazing, like that those kids did that. But again, that is something that the city should be providing, opportunities for kids to showcase art, to be creative, to, and art in all different, in all different ways. We don't even have a teen center here in Boulder. I mean, they have a teen center in Longmont, they have a teen center in Fort Collins. There's, there's no safe spaces for kids. Kids really like through the mental.
Yeah, what makes me think of is the Meadows Branch Library has, has the saddest little teen corner.
Teen corner, yeah.
And the only, the only child I ever remember showing any interest in that was like when one of my kids was 10 years old, they were like, ah, the teen.
Teen corner, right, yeah.
There weren't any teens in there.
There were no teens in there, no.
It was just like, you know.
And that, I mean, that, and that's also an adaptability problem. So like my, because it will need to change. And something that we were, I was talking about today with Growing Up Boulder is maybe when the municipal building leaves and goes up to Alpine Balsam, that's going to be an empty city building. Maybe that's an opportunity to create youth spaces. So then you can have spaces for, you know, teens, spaces for middle school kids, you know, maybe there's something that we can do with that building. And with that in mind, people always ask, well, how are you going to pay for it? So the best thing that's happened lately is when the Broncos sold, there was a grant that was in place. And the Broncos gave, based on the sale, the Broncos gave the city Boulder $2 million to be dedicated to youth opportunities. So there is, there, and Growing Up Boulder and the city's an outreach right now to, with kids to see what they want and what they need. And so for me, if I were to get elected to council, it'd be a perfect opportunity for me to come in to make sure that money got spent properly and in the right places.
And so you're, you're thinking partnerships with existing nonprofits or you're thinking like through Parks and Rec or?
Both. I mean, you know, there, there's existing nonprofits like Growing Up Boulder. There's, you know, a couple more youth-related, Boulder-based nonprofits that I think would be interested in getting involved. But in general, I would really look for the city and, and the Parks and Rec Department. And there's a SIP coming up, a capital improvement plan coming up for, for the Parks and Rec Department over the next few years. So I think that might be something that we could talk about doing in the Parks and Rec Comprehensive Plan. So, I mean, or the master plan. So I think that we could, I think that there's just a lot of opportunities. And, and especially right now in the world, the youth need help so badly. If you can, if you can catch kids at this point, you can prevent things like homelessness. You can prevent things like mental health issues. I mean, you don't want kids falling through the cracks. And if we have safe spaces for them to go, that, I mean, I'm lucky that my kids are in a position where they can say to me like, mom, I'm not, I'm not doing well today, you know? Maybe they don't want to talk to me, but they say, can I talk to somebody? And I will find them somebody to talk to. There's a lot of kids out there that may not have parents that, and again, not for the fault of the parents, because people are working to survive these days. They, they just may not be supported regardless of their income level. And so we need places where they could walk into, and maybe there's just a number on the wall that says, call here if you're feeling lonely. Or, you know, refer on mental health services, sexual, you know, like with sexual diversity, you know, de-stigmatizing those things and putting them in a place that makes kids feel safe with COVID isolation issues, with electronic isolation issues, with, you know, having the pandemic, the climate crisis. I mean, everything surrounding us right now is so negative. And as adults, we can handle it. I mean, we know how to process these things.
We're also struggling too.
We are struggling too. So if you can imagine how.
Seriously, it is so profound.
So profound.
What teens are going through.
Yeah, it is absolutely profound. And they, they can't even process things. When they take something on, it's so heavy, you know? And then on top of that, we have, and that was a question I was asked last night at the chamber was, you know, we have a labor shortage and especially in like the human services departments. And that to me is a whole nother issue because we have, we have, I think what we have, I struggle with this, but I think that there's an overall empathy issue in the United States. And people think, well, I mean, I can barely help myself. How am I gonna, how are you, how are you gonna ask people to help other people? You know, taking jobs like social working and nurses and, you know, just the jobs that are the hardest. Like I talked to Mike Black about the people that work at the shelter. I mean, those are the most unbelievably compassionate people that I've ever met. And they are hard to find these days. Even at the state level hospitals, it's not always a money issue because they're offering, they, they put out a stat that said, you know, they're working at half-capacity, they needed a lot, something like 120 nurses. They said, we'll give you a $10,000 signing bonus, zero applicants. Then they said, fine, we'll give you a $17,000 signing bonus and annual 3% increases. 17 applicants, that's all they got. And so we, we've got to figure out a way with our kids to, to increase empathy so they can understand that it's, you don't have to internalize everything and, and de-stigmatize a lot of these issues that people don't want to talk about. And the way I can figure to do that is to have the city create some of those spaces.
Well, one, one resource that may be of interest to you is the Boulder Tech High School has a biomedical sciences program, which is a great sort of launching pad for people going into medical professions. And I have, I have a child in that, in that program and he's thinking about going into nursing. We'll see what, you know, we'll see what happens.
That would be so great, yes.
Yeah, that's, I, and also about kids, I don't, I don't know if you were quite saying kids should be working or?
Oh, no, no, no. Kids should be taught empathy.
Yeah.
So when they get into the workforce, it's, it's, they're, they can understand how important it is to help other people. And whether that starts at a community level, you know, like again, with Girl Scouts, like how can I help people other than myself? And then you start to get into, when you start to think about the workforce, it's like, well, maybe the jobs that I would consider taking are things where I would want to help other people. So if they can be taught that empathy and that community activism early, then I think that might help us as a whole society later.
Well, I, I just would, you know, the, the train of thought I was having is, one reason I like living in the city is because it, it gives teens employment opportunities that would be difficult if you had to like drive them to a, to a job, you know? And so we've had really good luck with different employment situations with our kids living in town.
That's fantastic. Okay, good. That's next, that's coming next for me.
Well, I was also going to say, I love the idea of the municipal building being a, a, a place for youth because the, having Boulder High downtown is such an impactful situational place for, for kids. They have open campus and they come and go and they learn so much just from the proximity of being in the city. And anyways, I just, I, I love the idea of having kids in the city and being visible and them having space, you know, that's theirs and they, and they feel safe. And so, yeah, I think that's super cool.
Yep. Me too. I love it.
Cool.
So I hope, I'm hoping.
So I was curious about your land use and zoning expertise. Does any of this transfer to city politics?
So my experience in land use and zoning is in telecommunications. And with that, my territory is Illinois and Wisconsin, so no conflict of interest here in Colorado. Telecommunications can be a contentious industry to be in. But I've spent the last 20 years working with different municipalities and jurisdictions, working through the permitting process, land use and zoning, reuse, reuse, use permits, rezoning and upzoning areas in order to install telecommunications equipment. So I've done a lot of work with a lot of different jurisdictions and municipalities.
And so you know how to read a zoning?
Oh, yeah. I've read ours. I've read ours and it is complicated compared to some other zoning codes, for sure.
Because I would expect like you're working with the feds if you want a tower near an interstate or you're working with.
Oh, it's all local. Yeah, all, I mean, some county work and federal, never. Only, the only federal work that I've done is, there was a, for small cells. And this was a nationally mandated situation where they require jurisdictions to install small cells in the right of ways. But that was done, that was not a contract I negotiated. So that, other than that, it was all local. Everything was local, yeah.
And then you're putting cell towers in people's backyards or in parks or like?
Lots, lots of different places. That and, and that's, that was, that, that was the beginning of my work. Now I do in-building work mostly, which is installing cellular equipment in Class A office buildings and venues like stadiums in order to either upgrade or increase. So then you're working, you're still working from a permitting process, but it's more of an existing permitting process, not a rezoning or upzoning or anything like that. So, and then, and then because you're dealing with office buildings, you're also dealing with regulatory issues like SHIPPO and, you know, landmarks and historical preservations and things like that. So I've, I've worked with all of those things over my professional tenure.
It's interesting to think about how differently you might see a city just knowing how all that infrastructure gets put into the place.
Absolutely, yes.
I mean, I'm curious to just like know, when you walk through a city, you must, you must see the telecom.
Always. That's the first thing I see. My favorite ones are when you drive into Wyoming, right when you cross the Wyoming border, up on the bluff on the right-hand side is a buffalo antenna installation. So if you, when next time you drive into Wyoming, it looks like it's a buffalo facade, but it's a whole bunch of cellular antennas inside. And then there's another one, it's a monopine, which is, that's a pine tree that's, or it's a monopole disguised as a pine tree. And that one is on the, if you go into Netherland and you pass through Netherland, you're going, you know, kind of towards Eldora and keep going. We do some hiking up there and there is a very sad-looking monopine up there. I mean, like its little branches falling right off that pole. So it needs some, it needs some help. It is clearly not a pine tree.
Not fooling any animals or tourists.
So we see, I see it, I see them on the building sides, you know? And they've done a lot of work over time to stealth a lot of that stuff and some of it looks good.
I, when I walk through a city, I, I see electric lines and I see asphalt and it, it ruins the experience for me because like I see so many things that I think, ah, you know, with a little more investment or a little more of this care, you know, we could design beautiful, more beautiful cities.
I agree with that totally. I'm, the environment is something that concrete and pavement and parking lots are the worst, you know? We need more tree canopies, more vertical gardens, more rooftop gardens. We need some more greenery around here. So that's what I would hope for.
Well, so on this podcast, we almost always end up talking about housing. And since you're a city council candidate, it's very top of mind for me. Maybe just step us through what your thoughts are about housing and different policies that are being kicked around, including like, you know, rezoning and transit-oriented corridors and?
Sure. I mean, I'll say that on that side of things, like middle, missing middle and middle income Sure. I mean, I'll say that on that side of things, like middle, missing middle and middle income housing, I'm not going to have any great, I've come to realize over the last little while that what my ideas are not groundbreaking. A lot of people think the same way as I do, so please know that. I will talk about affordable housing though, um, through our like exclusionary policies, uh, or inclusionary policies, sorry, um, those true affordable housing, here's my thought on, on the matter. I, and I do think it's broken out in between uh, middle income housing or middle, missing middle housing and then affordable housing. In Boulder, I think that we have a, I don't think we have, people would say all the time, we have a stack problem, we have an inventory problem. I mean, simple research will show you if you go online that there are hundreds of available houses and hundreds of available rentals. They're just not affordable. So really what we need to look at here is affordability in order to try to get people into Boulder. The problem is the market, because the market is, is, it's in the business of, of profitability, it's not in the, you know, in the, in the market. The market is in the business of profitability, not affordability. So, you know, with that in mind, if we have somebody who's renting a house in Boulder and they put it on for $10,000 and somebody rents it, well, you know, that's what it is. And that's, what can you do, right? So rent control is, is, is not legal here in Colorado. And that is something that I would like to consider. So at the end of the day, I think that we need to regulate for what we want. And if what we want is affordability, then we're going to have to put some more regulations on it. I was really disappointed that occupancy passed without any affordability covenants attached to it. We did it with ADUs, I don't know why we didn't do it with occupancy. I think that our inclusionary policies are great. Uh, cash and lieu is a wonderful thing, as is our commercial linkage. If you take both of those things together and you can leverage money out of develop, out of the developers and give them to our Boulder Housing Partners and, you know, let our Housing and Human Services Department do what they do to leverage that money, they can create a lot more affordable housing than twenty-five percent created in a development. So I'm a big fan of those policies. And I think they're doing a great job. I've talked to Kurt, uh, you know, he says we have about a thousand units in the works right now. Um, they have the, uh, down payment assistance program, which is great. And here's an interesting story. This is, it's, it's an aside, but I took an Uber home the other day from, from downtown and in my Uber, there was a, the driver, and I just started asking him questions. He had an accent that I wasn't familiar with. And I said, where are you from? And he said, I'm from Nepal. I said, how long have you been here? He said, ten years. I said, how'd you get here? Why'd you come here? People from here want to go to Nepal, you know? And he said, well, you know, I worked at a bank and I wanted to go to, you know, to the greatest country and I, I didn't want to have fear of Russia or China invading us at any moment. And, and so I went through, the US Labor Department offers a lottery program that they give to countries.
Of course.
And I applied for the lottery program. I got, I got in. My family and I were able to move here because we had a sponsor, they knew somebody in Boulder. So we've been living here in a rental for ten years. And I said, oh, are you, are you, did you go through Boulder Housing Partners? Or you're part of our for? He says, you know, he was saying it's so expensive. And I said, well, do you have assistance? And he's like, no. I said, you don't use our affordable housing program? He said, what's that? And I said, okay. I said, did you know that we have a down payment assistance program for, if you want to buy a house? He's like, I had no idea.
Most people don't know that, in his defense.
That was, that's a new one. But even he did, had no idea that there was a program that he could, I said, you have to make a certain amount of money, you know, it's a portion of AMI, you have to qualify. And he said, well, I, I qualify, like I would like to be a part of that program. So this man and his family have been living here ten years, spending more money than they should, trying to get his parents out of Nepal and had no idea that we had an affordable housing program. So I was like, oh geez, okay, you know? And if you go on to Boulder Housing Partners right now, they have availability. Um, there are available apartments right now. So, um, as far as affordable housing goes, I think that we have a very robust system in place. I think we could probably do some community outreach to make sure more people know about it who live here. Um, and I think that, uh, we should continue with what we're doing. I do know that they're, you know, they're looking to try to get to fifteen percent. I think that's absolutely achievable, especially with all the developments that we see coming in. There'll be a lot of cash and move coming into the city of Boulder. For the missing middle, this is where I'm, I'm not very creative. I thought I was creative at first, but, um, it turns out that a lot of people have the same idea as I do. Um, and that is really just to put, I think we should be rezoning our, uh, our areas, um, industrial, some industrial areas in some of our business districts in order to allow for, uh, triplexes and duplexes and multi-unit housing near transit corridors, revisiting our parking requirements, because people want to recreate and they want to live where they work. And so.
So you kind of quartered that off to, you, you, you didn't say, uh, single-family zoned areas should become.
I do not. I think that we should leave our, 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 our L and R E zoning districts alone. I think that's where people are most passionate. I mean, property is America's largest asset. People, you know, it's, to me, if you look at Boulder, if we start, you know, upzoning our residential neighborhoods, I think we will lose more families. I don't think we're going to gain more families. We, in a college town, things aren't like every other town. You know, if you're going to rezone residential neighborhoods, I think you will get more of a college, you'll get more developers buying up those properties. There would have to be so much regulation put into place to make sure that those are not developer-owned. And, and, and it's not affordable and it's not near transit corridors for the most part. I mean, if you try to put something into, um, Martin Akers, they don't even have a bus, you know? So I mean, what areas are you really looking?
Two oh four goes through.
But not, they lost one of the buses that, that serviced the main portion of that area. So they're trying to figure out how to get to, according to the residents that I've spoken to. So I don't know Martin Akers that well, that's just what I was told. Um, and so they're trying to figure out the right ways to it. So I've actually talked to them about the on-call thing and they were really excited. Because, you know, Fraser Meadows is a lot of elderly and things like that. So they can't walk too far to get to a stop. So whatever they lost was, was catastrophic to them. And so in those areas, I think that, no, I, I do not agree with rezoning residential areas. So that is, I'm an outlier on that one.
I, yeah, we, we, uh, we differ on that.
Yeah.
I, I, uh, I really have a vision for Boulder that we can, you know, we're, I, I often say we're a city that's just handed over to cars. And, uh, it's very difficult to get people out of cars when we have such low intensity sprawl-like, um, neighborhoods, but.
Well, for me, like, like I said, I think that people are really passionate about their neighborhoods when it comes to single-family homes. And if you look down here, people who live in a city, they don't mind infill, they don't mind density, you know, like that's fine. I mean, I lived in downtown Chicago in the loop for fifteen years and I couldn't have cared less what they were building around me, you know, just as long as there was a close grocery store I could walk to and, um, you know, good restaurants. That's all I was looking for when I was in my twenties and thirties. And so, and that, and that, another one is the industrial. So I did speak to a developer who is, he's like, I have this 200,000 square foot thing, I can't fill it. You know, people, manufacturing isn't really something that people are going to come to Boulder to do anymore. And that, you know, they would need fifty to five hundred employees staff it. There's nowhere for those people to live in Boulder.
Yeah.
So I went to the planning board, I offered it up. I said, can we turn this into some sort of multi-use, mixed-use housing? And they said, no. So that is something else I'd like to look at changing.
And that, why do they say no? Because it's not consistent with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan?
I don't know. I didn't get.
Zone, it's just too hard to.
All I knew is that they just said, no. I don't know if it was a, and I do think that, that, that the boards and commissions, the planning board probably uses some zoning restrictions to stifle growth, you know, and that's, I mean, lots of cities do that. So I'm guessing maybe that's what it is. But I mean, there's buildings popping up left and right all over downtown right now, so.
Well, one of the common refrains is that there's a housing jobs imbalance. So many, it seems to me like anytime if you could take commercial,
Properties.
Property that, that's having difficulty being leased out and you could turn it into residential, that helps that ratio, you know, in the right direction anyways.
Well, I agree with that. But from a land use and zoning perspective, if you look at commercial office buildings, they're not really set up. You can't really, I don't think you can repurpose. You would have to tear down and rebuild, you know? And then you're really getting into, because commercial office buildings, the zoning code for those, there's really not, there's no open space, the parking, you really have to look at rezoning a lot of things in order to get a commercial. Whereas if you're looking at the business districts, it's a little bit different. You have a little bit more leeway, the open spaces there, you know?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, we've kind of wandered into territory that I don't quite fully understand. So, so when you went to planning board, this, what, what kind of building was it that you were?
Oh, it wasn't me.
No, it wasn't you?
No, 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 no.
Someone that you had talked to.
Yes, I just spoke with somebody, yeah. I spoke with somebody. It was, it was a big ware, a 200,000 square foot warehouse.
Yeah. So totally unusable for residential.
That's what they said. I mean, it should have been able, residential or industrial should be able to be rezoned.
Yeah.
There's no reason why industrial shouldn't be able to be rezoned. But the planning board said no. So again, if I was on council, I would look at something like that and I would, I would ask to either call it up or figure out a way to, to stop things like that from not happening.
And in this, in this example, it was, um, the idea was to repurpose a warehouse or just like raise it and, and do something different with the?
I'm not exact, all I know is that the, the person who owned the building took it to planning board and said, can we, we'd like to turn this into a, a housing development and the planning board just said no. Yeah.
Well, what else would you like to talk about before we sign off?
Um, I mean, that's, those are, those are all good topics. Those are fun topics, I think, you know? The, I see, envi- I mean, environment a little bit, we touched on that a little bit. Like I want to try to make sure that we, we do some things in Boulder that are more, you know, carbon friendly. We've, we've got some things, Boulder has some things in place right now that are going to be, I think with, uh, removing gas stoves and gas-powered lawn equipment, I think we've got some good steps happening there. I really think that we need to do a better job of increasing our tree canopy, of installing rooftop gardens, vertical gardens, trying to turn the city into something that's just a little bit more green and less concrete would be fantastic.
The, um, the notion of everyone going out and buying new lawnmowers, um, sort of rubs me the wrong way. I wonder if we could incorporate some sharing of lawnmowers.
I, I like that, yes. But the city or the state or the county will be offering, there'll be vouchers in there to make sure that it's an equitable change.
Yeah, it's not so much that. I mean, that's, that's important too, but, um, I, it just, one thing that just drives me crazy is, is, um, this kind of goes with single-family home zoning is everyone has.
Grass.
Everyone has theirs. No, it's more about like, there's less sharing, everyone has their own lawnmower.
Yeah.
Which is like, you, you probably only need one lawnmower per block.
Yeah, right, you're right, yeah.
But anyways, I wonder if there's ways to encourage that sort of.
I like that.
Cause, cause yeah, uh, buying a bunch of electric lawnmowers has an environmental cost too.
That's true, yeah. So you're going to have to dispose of existing lawnmowers and then, yeah. Um, and that's just like overuse. We overuse so many things, you know, like even my husband, the other day, he'll kill me for telling you this, so maybe, or maybe don't. Put it in there, but.
You email me after, after the interview and let me know.
I think it's a funny story though, he, cause you know, we're just, like I said, things, they move so fast. Everything moves so fast these days. And our washing machine wasn't working, it just wasn't spinning, it wasn't working. And I mean, it's seven years old, but I mean, washing machines should go forever, I feel like. It's a washing machine. So the thing is just not spinning and it's just, it keeps trying and it's trying and he's like, oh my God, I'm done. I'm going to, I'm going to the store, I'm getting a new one. And I'm like, hold on, like let me Google it for a second.
See if there's a $10 party.
Exactly, right. So I Google it and it's like, you probably have a sock stuck in like the spinner thing. And he's like, well, I can't, I don't have time to take the spinner. I'm like, all right, I'll find a guy, you know? So I find a repairman that comes in and, you know, it was a hundred dollars. He comes in and he kind of takes the thing apart and finds like eight socks in there that were just, you know, affecting the spinner, yeah, and just got caught in there. So he fixed it all up for us. And it was like, oh, you know, instead of spending however much we would have had to have spent.
Yeah, I always, when, when we have people come to the house to help to fix things, I always watch, I always strike up conversation and watch what they're doing in case.
You can do it.
In case there's something small that I can pick up and save myself some money next time.
Yeah, but yeah, it was just socks. It was so many socks. So yeah, reusing things and fixing things to me is so important. Like, um, I think, you know, I love the way people used to do, there's so many things I love about, you know, like the old days, but that, you know, like if your vacuum breaks, don't throw it in the garbage.
Movement called right to fix.
Right, was it really?
Yeah, there is.
Oh my gosh.
And, uh, it's, I, it's, but it doesn't, it's not really something you address at a city level. It's usually a state or a federal level type of thing. But yeah, I, I love, I love the notion of, of, uh, the right to fix a phone or anything that you buy. There ought to be replacement parts and, and clear instructions on how to, I've, I've replaced so many of these screens on these little phones.
Yeah, oh, yeah. We do that for my children all the time, yeah. Um, but so that's definitely, I think, you know, from an environmental standpoint, I think that there's a lot of air quality issues. I think there's a lot of reusable issues, reusable energy things that we can be focusing on. So, um, you know, those are really, I like the positive, um, I like the positive topics, you know? I think that again, just trying to bring some joy and happiness to life these days is just so important. We're missing that so much.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, uh, thank you for so much.
Yes, absolutely.
For being here and, uh, and joining me on the podcast. It was really lovely.
Thank you so much for having me.
You bet.
Okay. Well, that was fun.
Gonna find me a residential pedestrian district where I can gracefully grow older. Gonna spend my remaining years sharing Boulder. Thank you for listening to Sharing Boulder. Please support the podcast by sharing it with your friends and neighbors. You can contact me at linktree.com/philipogren, which you can find by searching for Linktree Philip Ogrin, or by visiting sharingboulder.us, where you can also find show notes and previous episodes. This episode of Sharing Boulder was produced by Philip Ogrin and edited by Catherine Avery. The music was created by Nathaniel Ogrin and SAC Lunch. Keep sharing, Boulder.